We call the regularly scheduled.
Recording in progress.
Meeting to the board. Are there any citizen comments tonight? I don't think there are any citizen comments. So move on to additions two and additions from the posted agenda. I have none because anything else? Uh, so manager form.
Okay, um, just wanted the board to know that you may have seen ads out for a temporary full-time office assistant, uh, which is to replace Nikki when she goes out on maternity leave. It's not a new position or anything and it's, mainly because the part-time person we are in the zoning office is no longer available to cover that position. That was a part of what we were planning on doing, but that's not worked out. The shoes on Central Street were, uh, are still there as of noon. They were supposed to be gone by Friday, but I'm sure the company got hung up and, and I'm sure they will do it eventually. The local treaty service and they're very committed to getting them removed. Uh, just reporting about the trucks at the last meeting, uh, the board approved this truck purchase contingent upon the government pricing concessions that in fact the pricing is based on and, uh, board of clermy line confirmed that. So the order is a good place. Um, I just want to let the board know that now I'm keeping my head above water in the public works directive, so am I. Um, but, um, didn't know I'd like to do the best I can. And I'll just, just leave it at that.
All right, thank you. And so we have a presentation, um, on Bridge One over Gulf Stream. Is there, um, someone online to present?
Hi, yes, that's me, Laura Stone with V-Trans. Um, I have a presentation here, so I'm going to try to share my screen. It looks like host is disabled, participant screen sharing.
If people take care of get that.
There we go. So hopefully everyone can see my presentation now. Um, so I've been asked to keep this pretty quick because you have a pretty long agenda today. Um, so I'm going to just fly through this and if you need me to slow down at any point, just let me know. So this is the alternatives presentation meeting for FAS Route 166. That's Palm Fret Road, Bridge One over Gulf Stream. I'm Laura Stone, the V-Trans scoping engineer. We also have Adam Goudreau, who's the, uh, going to be the V-Trans design project manager for the project. So really the purpose of the meeting tonight, um, we want to give you an overview of, of the bridge, talk about the constraints, the alternatives that we looked at in the scoping report. Ultimately, we want to build consensus towards a direction for this bridge project. Um, we also want to, uh, provide an opportunity to ask questions and voice concerns. I have that at the bottom there, but feel free to just interrupt me at any time. So here's a location map. Um, let me see if I can get my pointer up. There we go. So the bridge is located up here, uh, north of Vermont Route 12 on Palm Fret Road. There's an aerial view. It is located just south of Stimets Road. Um, so this slide is really, this is a, a timeline of our project development process at V-Trans. And this is really just to show you this project's at a really early, early stage of project development. So a project's been funded. We're in this stage called project definition. This is where we identify the environmental resources, the cultural resources. We evaluate alternatives for the project. Um, we have this part, public participation piece and ultimately we want to build consensus towards, towards a preferred alternative. So, so once we have that, that's when the project will be defined. We'll move into design. That's when we're going to be quantifying areas of impact, start the permitting process, the right-of-way process if needed. After project design, a contract will be awarded and the project will move into construction. So again, we are at a really early stage of project development. Uh, I'm gonna skip over some slides. I kept them all in here so people can go back and look at this presentation. And if they have questions, reach out to me, but just in terms of keeping this, um, keeping this brief, skip over a couple. This is a, a picture looking south over the bridge. It's classified as a major collector. Um, the bridge is an 82-foot, uh, span, single span rolled beam bridge constructed in 1937, reconstructed in 1973. And it is owned by the town of Woodstock. So there is going to be, um, there is going to be town funds involved in this project. Uh, which brings me on to my next slide. So prior to 2012, all-town highway bridge programs were 80% federally funded, 10% state-funded and 10% town-funded. Um, so per Act 153 of the 2012 legislative session, uh, the local share is reduced by 50% for rehabilitating bridge versus replacement. And it's reduced an additional 50% if you close the road during construction and don't, um, construct a temporary bridge. So as you can see here, the, the town share is anywhere from 10% to 5%, 2.5% and the state does pick up that, that extra share. Here's a picture looking north over the bridge. Um, there's a dry hydrant located in the project area. There's also, um, quite a bit of aerial utilities. They're located pretty far off the road. So, um, hopefully depending on, uh, the alternative that we move forward with, we might be able to, um, put the project through without a, without an aerial relocation. So the existing conditions of Bridge One, the deck is rated in fair condition. There's some concrete popping off of, of the bottom. We call that spalled areas. There's some exposed reinforcing steel. Um, also there's, uh, drains located on the bridge on the sides and those are in, in rusted and in really failed condition and there's leaking on the beams below. So bridge inspection ratings, again, the deck is rated a five. It's in fair condition. That's a picture there of that spalled-out area with the reinforcing steel showing. Uh, the superstructure, so the superstructure are these beams on top of that, uh, that the deck sits on. So these beams are in good condition. They're rated, we consider that a seven. And the substructure, which is the, we call them in abutment or really the foundations on either end of the bridge, those are also in good condition. They're rated a seven. Again, beams, really good condition. Uh, the abutments, uh, they're in good condition. It's another, there's typical back wall. Again, the back wall, we're not seeing any spalled-out, um, concrete. Um, debris fill-up, uh, buildup following large flow events. So because this bridge is located in a flood zone, it's, it's located in a flood area, there's, there's this debris that's, that's going to get trapped under the bridge after high-flow events. Um, that's really, that's not based on, um, it's not based on the span or anything. So right now, the, the bank is 40, 40 feet and this has a span of 80 feet. So we're spanning the bank. We're doing what we can here. It's just, it's in a flood zone. So regardless of the alternative that's chosen, this is just going to have to be a maintenance activity, um, that happens periodically from the town. Not much we can do about it. So that's that drain that I mentioned that's failed. Um, so with any of the alternatives, this would, um, this would be replaced. So here's a view looking, um, east or looking downstream. There are some wetlands, um, some agricultural soils as well as, um, some areas of archaeological sensitivity located in the project area. The existing condition, so this is the layout. So if, like, you're looking at it from a bird's eye view, looking down, this gray box here, that is the bridge. The brown portions, that's the roadway. This neon green line right here, that is the existing town-owned right-of-way. So you can see there's, um, there's quite a bit of rights here. The aerial utilities, that's this dotted line right here that says ECT. Um, also to point out these wetlands here. So this line with the triangles, those are the delineated wetlands. There's some in this quadrant as well. So design criteria and considerations. Um, there's an average daily traffic of 2,000 vehicles per day. Design hourly volume, so that's your peak hour of traffic of 230 vehicles per hour, percent trucks of 15.4. And here are the alternatives that we considered and, um, I'll go through these after this slide. Um, the no-action alternative, a deck rehabilitation, a deck replacement, a superstructure replacement, and then a full bridge replacement. And we only looked at on alignment options because this is on a straight, straight tangent. So it didn't make sense to look at off-alignment structures. So alternative one, the minor rehabilitation, that's really, we leave the existing deck in place. We leave the existing beams or the superstructure in place and we just do some minor concrete patching. This maintains the existing bridge width of 11-4. Those are two 11-foot travel lanes with four-foot shoulders. And that is, um, that exceeds the minimum standard of 11-3. Um, so really, any of the alternatives maintains this existing bridge width. Alternative one layout looks exactly like, uh, the existing layout because the bridge remains in place. With this, again, we just do concrete repair on the deck. The deterioration is addressed and it, we'd expect about a 20-year design life. Alternative two, typical section, looks very similar. It's that 11-4 typical. So with this option, we really would just be replacing this top portion here, this concrete, and we would replace the deck right on top of the existing beams. Um, again, we would be on the existing beams. We would maintain that 80, 82-foot span right there. And we'd expect a 50-year design life based on those, those good-rated substructures and superstructure. Alternative three, so a superstructure replacement. Again, it's, has that same typical section, those 11-foot travel lanes with four-foot shoulders. The only difference with this is that we would be replacing the concrete deck as well as those steel beams underneath. So the existing foundations on either end, those would remain in place. There's the layout. Again, we would be founded, the new, the new superstructure would be founded on those existing abutments on either end. So it would look very similar. Um, new deck railing and superstructure. And again, we'd expect about a 50-year design life. Alternative four, typical section, same typical section, that 11-4 typical section would be maintained. Um, in this, in this case, the, the deck as well as the beams and the foundations would all be replaced. And so it would be a brand-new bridge. Um, we would recommend not shortening this even though the bank is only 40 feet wide. Um, our hydraulics unit has, has recommended maintaining that 82-foot, uh, length. And so again, it would look very similar. And with a full bridge replacement, we'd expect a 75-year design life. So the recommendation in our scoping report was a deck replacement. It would address the deteriorating condition of that concrete deck. Um, we would replace the railings on either side and those, and those downspouts that are in poor condition. So by replacing those downspouts, that would mean there's no longer, uh, roadway runoff dripping onto the beam. So that would also, um, keep the beams nice and dry for years to come. It results in all components being in good condition or better with a minimum upfront and annualized cost. Um, again, the existing typical section exceeds the minimum standards. We'd be maintaining that 11-foot, four-foot typical section. It would have a 50-year design life. Um, so on to maintenance of traffic. So we looked at three options. We looked at an off-site detour, phased construction and a temporary bridge. Now with an off-site detour, we would close the road. Um, the detour would be chosen and signed by the town. There'd be a 45-day closure duration and the shortest detour route around is one mile end-to-end. That is that Stimets Road. That's a class three gravel road that has, um, I believe it's, it's posted for 24,000 pounds. Um, so this is really just the shortest route around that we're showing. That's that one mile end-to-end. So from one end of the bridge all the way to the other is one mile. Um, there are longer detour routes around that, that the town could choose if they want to keep it all on class, uh, two or better roads. Um, but ultimately, uh, on a class-two road, it's up to the town to choose the appropriate, uh, detour. So phased construction, this is when we construct one side of the bridge at a time while maintaining traffic on the bridge. So you can see in this picture, traffic is maintained on this side while they work on this side of the bridge. It would be alternating one-way traffic with signals on either end. This is what, um, the first phase would look like. So traffic would be on this, on this top portion here. And phase two. And a temporary bridge. So we'd, uh, recommend a one-lane temporary bridge constructed either downstream or upstream. There's really not much located in the project area. An upstream temporary bridge, um, would have potential impacts to wetlands over here depending on, depending on this fill. Um, it would require additional right-of-way, um, temporary rights to be, um, to be obtained from this property owner up here. And then a downstream temporary bridge. Uh, this has more impacts to the utilities and would definitely require a utility relocation. Um, again, there's additional right-of-way that would be required for the section outside of the town-owned right-of-way. So our recommendation here, deck replacement with traffic maintained on an off-site detour for 45 days. Uh, again, it would address the deteriorating condition of that deck. Results in all components being good or better. Um, we're exceeding the minimum standard for bridge width and it would have a 50-year design life. So here's the cost matrix and there's really a lot going on in this, um, picture. So I'll just, um, bring to your attention this line right here. So this bold line right here, that is the town share for the project with the percentages. So for the recommendation, it would have a 2.5% share. So we consider a deck replacement or a superstructure replacement as a rehabilitation. So that would get you that 50% reduction in share and also the off-site detour. Um, so this ranges from, the recommended alternative has approximately $30,000 for a town share versus if you were to go all the way up to a full bridge replacement, $140,000. Or with a temporary bridge, $300,000. Um, so you can take a look at this later and if you have any questions, just you can reach out to me. So currently we have this in the budget for 2025, um, total cost estimate of $1.3 million, town share of $33,000. That's for that 2.5% share. So if the town decided they wanted a temporary bridge increase, um, or a different alternative, that's just for the preferred alternative. Um, so next steps, uh, at this point, we're going to wait for the town to respond on how they would like to proceed with this project, what alternative they'd like to choose. After that, we would develop conceptual plans. Um, we'd send them back to the town, uh, to comment. Um, at that point, if everything looks good, we would process the, uh, the finance and maintenance agreement, start the right-of-way process, start design, um, and the town would get updates on the project plans and estimates at each submental. Um, so before I open up to questions and comments, and I know that was really quick, uh, there is this, uh, this website at the top here and the town has a copy of this website here. So this is a public-facing website that anybody can go to. Tonight's presentation will be up on that website. Conceptual plans, final plans, all those plan sites, plan sets will be put up on that public-facing site. So anybody can go and kind of track the project, it, track the progress of the project as it, as it moves along. Any questions, comments?
I do, I do have one question. Uh, I think that you said you're the V-Trans recommendation, your recommendation was one-way, um, or a single-lane bridge, like temporary bridge?
Our recommendation is to close the road. So an off-site detour.
Right, that's what, and then, so my only, is that a single-lane off-site deto-, oh, sorry. Let me back up. The, if it's one-way traffic control, is that wired in or is that solar? If, if we use that option?
So with either phased construction, we would maintain traffic through the project site and it would be one lane alternating through the project site. So that's with phased construction or a temporary bridge. And I believe those, um, those traffic lights are gener-, are on a generator. I could be wrong about that, but I don't believe they're wired in. Adam might have a better, um, better.
The reason I ask is just from a project on Route 12 earlier that the lights kept going out and we had major traffic, issues with backups and, um, so if we blow that route, I just wanted to make sure that we would address that issue in the planning phase.
Okay, that's a really good comment. I hadn't heard of that issue before.
No, thank you. And I think Susan had a question.
Um, yes, if we went with the recommendation of a deck replacement and detour, what's the, um, time, time of construction? How long would the bridge be closed approximately?
So it would be closed for approximately 45 days. That 45-day closure is based on a cast-in-place deck. So that's when they have to come out, pour the concrete, wait for it to cure. Um, they have to form all that up. So there's some time involved in that. This is a good location to option it out for pre-cast deck panels. Um, that would be up to the contractor. Um, if, if we went that route, that 45 days would be reduced. Um, and that's really, you know, 45 days is, is our conservative, you know, we're not going to go past 45 days. But once we get a construction schedule and we know the means and methods, it's possible that that would be reduced.
One question. If we, if we go the detour route over on Stimets Road, we don't need any traffic lights or anything, right?
No traffic lights, nope.
Yeah.
On the phased construction, does that add, um, time and money to the project?
It does. It, so phased construction's really slow just because it, you need to perform every single construction activity or most activities twice. And so you have to come out and pour this side of the deck and then you have to come out and pour the other side of the deck. And so it, it is slow and it's one lane alternating throughout that entire time. The other thing with phased construction is that the town share would increase from 2.5% to 5% because they wouldn't get that 50% reduction for closing the road. Um, so just something to be aware of. So with the phased construction, it is a bit more expensive and it's a higher share for the town. So that would go from 30,000 to 80,000.
Laura, when do you need a decision from the town on, um, what method, uh, they would choose, we would choose to do?
Yeah, that's the million-dollar question. I get that question a lot and, um, you know, next month is fine, two months from now is fine. The longer you wait, you know, if you wait six months before giving us a decision, um, that's okay. It just means that, that 2025 construction could become 2026 construction. Because at this point, until the town gives us a direction, the project just goes standstill.
Yeah.
I really think alternative to option A is like the clear winner. Do we need to drag this out?
Yeah. Yeah.
I see Rita has her hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna call on Rita.
Hi. Um, I, I also want to point out, and maybe Laura could explain too. I know other town highway bridges, um, when towns do choose to, um, you know, forego a temporary bridge and just close it completely, do they have, um, does V-Trans give a grant to assist with like, um, enforcement? Or, um, if, you know, a lot of the detour traffic goes on Stimets, there might be some, um, you know, additional maintenance that the town has to do to upkeep with that extra stuff. Um, so I just want to kind of.
That, well, that's a good question. So we offer that grant. Um, it's the Town Highway Mitigation Grant. We offer it on state, um, state-owned bridges. And so if we have a state-owned bridge and we're expecting traffic is going to be going around on local roads, we will reimburse the town for that. Um, the way we see it, because, because there is this reduction in, in share, um, some of those extra funds could be used for, if you, if the town needs enforcement, if they need, um, whatever they need. If they need, uh, additional, uh, calcium chloride on the road or, or whatever. So that is available for state-owned bridges, but not here.
And then the town would be responsible for the sign package?
Yes.
Like the detour sign, not the contractor?
Correct. Correct. So we would include the signs at either end of the bridge, um, just for safety to make sure that nobody's going to drive into the construction zone. But the, the signs around the detour to let cars know where to go, that, that would be the responsibility of the town. Yep. And to sign for the MUTCD. And with that 45-day closure, we do, um, something called incentives disincentive. And so, um, for every day that the contractor opens the bridge, um, before that 45 days, they would get, they would get money. And for every day, if they go over this 45 days, um, it's a disincentive and they have to pay us a, a quite a bit, quite a lot of money. It's for every hour past that 45 days. And I can say we've done a lot of these closures, over 100 of them, and it's only been twice that the contractor hasn't, hasn't made that deadline. And those, th- those were more complicated situations, certainly not, um, certainly not a site like this. So we're pretty confident in the, in those numbers.
Yeah. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment to the board that I agree with Harry. This pretty much seems like a no-brain.
Yeah. I, I. Sign package is easier than a feeling.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure about Stimets Road, but, well, it's pretty narrow.
You probably have to keep it graded.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it will.
I, I think a lot of people, once they know that's, that's a detour, they will just choose to come down Route 12 instead.
Yeah.
If they're coming from that direction or going that way.
Yep.
Um, but I mean, economically and like in terms of time it takes to get the project done. It's really straightforward.
I agree.
All right.
So do we want to make a decision tonight or should we revisit?
I think we have to warrant it. Don't, I mean, I. I'm not warrant, I mean, but I think it should.
Public comment.
It has to be on the agenda, I would think, so that anybody like on Stimets, Stimets Road would know.
So we'll keep it on the, we'll keep it on the agenda for, um,
Next meeting.
October evening meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think under.
I think that's fair.
Under the rules, we probably can't just go from having a presentation to a vote.
Yep. Sounds fair. And this brings us to permits. So we got the first one is, do you want to come up? Hey, yeah, please. So we have your application.
And just so you know, what you've seen from the state, I made you copy that information.
It's right up here.
It told us absolutely nothing.
Yeah.
So we have a lot of questions for you.
Okay, sure. So I've been licensed, or do you want to ask your questions?
Why don't, yeah, do you want to tell us in a week what's left over?
Okay, so I've been licensed by the state for a tier-one, um, cultivation. Technically, that is. Technically, that is a hundred twenty-five plants for a thousand square foot canopy. And it's mixed-use, so that can be indoor and/or outdoor. I don't have any intention of growing much.
Is that just how it comes?
We are, I am planning to cultivate indoors this winter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in hopes of supplementing what we might need at my new store.
Yeah.
Um, I have under the number of personal use plants that are allowed each year, outdoor. Um, so the mixed-use process. Utilize those plants as well. Um, outdoor, I would plan in the spring probably to have no more than twenty plants.
Okay.
And they require that the, um, space is locked in the basement. And, um, video surveillance, which we have, we don't have, I don't have anything set up ready to go or anything. Um, I was waiting. And, um, and then drying and curing is in a separate locked room.
And that's because of the permit, that, that's part of being tier-one? Like the separate?
Locked. It doesn't have to, but yeah, I mean, if that's.
Yeah.
It'll be an existing structure, it's no new structure.
No new structures, no. And, um, technically it is a private building. So I did get a, a letter from the, um, Department of Public Safety, the paramountal saying there's no jurisdiction. And, um, they do have a security plan. Um, the outdoor, they only require one, um, measure of security and you're, and saying a, um, motion activated public. Or, and or you can say, um, game.
Okay.
It doesn't require a fence if you're a tier-one. But it does have to not be able to be seen.
So the security measures you just mentioned, those were requirements with a state permit.
Yeah.
You have to bear with us because this is the first one we're doing. And, and I actually sat through a training last week and it was, uh, it didn't go into grow operations. It was all dedicated pretty much to, uh, retail. Yeah.
Have, have you had any conversations with the zoning administrator on whether or not you have to get a permit there?
Yes, I didn't.
Okay. Yeah, I know, it looks, I mean, just looks to me like it fits, you know, the home occupation exemption or something with no new buildings, no, no other, no other employees, right?
No. And there won't be people going on.
Right.
So, yeah.
I see one question from Lisa.
Yeah, hi, um, Lisa Lawler. Um, I'm on the Woodstock Cannabis Commission as a consultant. And my one concern about home grow is the outdoor. Um, there's only one, in tier-one, there only has to be one of several safety measures. And fence or camera or in that. And I don't even know if that can be addressed in, in the town zoning. But it's a very risky endeavor in, in that way, um, for public safety. And the state has not been clear about what kind of protections are out there for growers. And I'm concerned about a kid figuring out, a teenage kid figuring out where it is stealing a plant. Um, the, the, um, the retail establishment is very clear. But I feel like the grower establishment is not clear enough. And not saying PJ isn't doing enough for that. But I have concerns around the public safety measures and I'm not the only one. I know that Robbie Bliss said it and I, I just want to pass that on. Um, I don't have any other issues other than the state has not provided enough information about public safety for indoor/outdoor growers on private property. I just wanted to pass that on because it is a concern for me.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
It sounds like indoor growing is more restrictions. Yeah, I know, it just.
It's, you know, up to six plants to empower it once we've been growing.
Right. I think that that's where all the CBE farms near the colleges. That's what I heard.
Um.
On my reading was we can't require our zoning or anything, we can't require more than the state does.
Right.
So if you meet the state.
And to keep plants being stolen.
Yes.
Um, because somebody, you don't want to steal them until they're flowering. By the time they're flowering, they're, they're like, it'd be tall, you know, they're huge. And I, we have two really big dogs. But, you know, if we have, you can't see from the road and we actually don't have, you know, and I would love to get this indoor grow going and, um, would be happy to look into additional safety measures for the outdoor once we, once we get it going, but.
If the state hasn't provided more guidance, then, I mean, as long as you're following the requirements of the tier-one, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Yes, well, they gave me my license pending your approval.
Right. And our only, or our main concern was the, um, the zoning requirements. And if you've talked to Stephen, then that's good, but.
There was no.
Um. What are?
Was it, um, was it considered a home occupation?
That's right.
Yeah, don't have any employees.
But I think he has to issue a permit if he's considering it a home occupation.
No, that's no comment.
No permit required, none of them.
Exempt home occupation, resident owner is the only employee, no clients, signs are outdoor storage, no deliveries, office use only, but, I, you know.
I guess.
And to me, it's kind of like if you, if you want to grow flowers.
But.
And bring them to your floor, your own flower shop, you don't need a permit.
But I'm not an expert at zoning, so.
Said no.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. He said it. So.
I would move we grant the permit?
I'll second it.
Motion by Susan, second by Ray to grant the permit, um, as submitted. If there's any other discussion among the board, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's four in favor with one absent, the motion carries. Thank you. Sure.
I've been in touch with the cannabis local board about our retail. We've applied for a retail license and I asked if I could be approved by the town, by the commission, Woodstock Commission before I get my license. And they said that you can do that.
Okay.
You don't have, so is there any way I could get on? Like, you know, you would approve it pending that I get my license.
Um, next.
Just so that once I do get my license from the state, I can get going and I don't have to.
That seems fine, we just.
We have to put it on the.
Right.
So at the next meeting.
The October evening meeting. Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Matt and Nick. We've got the application for the Eastern States Cup, which is on October second from eight to four. And you guys have the, already spoken to the trustees and have the permits from them. Um, I think, seeing that, probably, uh, yes, the next page.
No, we don't have the town, the village permit.
No.
Okay.
Um. So they might ask you these questions, but which is the start point, suicide or?
Saskadina.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mount Peg. It's a Mount Peg. Okay, but there's no, like, it's individuals after their race at one, riding to the next. There's not like a group ride, so there's no need for traffic controller.
Yes, however, uh, Officer Bliss did want to have some traffic control.
Okay.
We, we came up with a slightly different route than was in the permit application. So I thought that would be helpful for you guys to.
Sure.
Um, and I'm president of Woodstock Carrying Mountain Bike Association, Matt Stout. Vice President also. And, uh, so there's the Woodstock Inn with the landowner. We built the trails and the Eastern State Cups is an organization that helps host the actual event. The, the event itself is called in burrow. So the, the, the kids that ride it are timed, um, on their descents. And they're not timed when they go between trails. And that was something we wanted to make sure folks understood that they're not racing from one parking lot to the next.
Right.
So they do one trail down at Saskadina Six, then they ride through the village to the Mount Peg Trail. Um, they do three trails at Mount Peg, then they ride back from Mount Peg to Saskadina Six. And so we just wanted to make sure that we, um, well, we weren't certain if we even needed a parade permit. Quite frankly, we just aired on the side of caution. Um, there's less than three hundred people in the event. So it's not like the twenty-five hundred in covered bridges, it's not like nineteen hundred in the turkey trot. And they're, they're leaving individually at the start line. So they're told to go and they start climbing and then they descend and they go every minute. Um, the two hundred and fifty riders and they start to spread out once you climb the hill and come back down. And so I think the key changes to the route, and I, I made little copies for everyone. This doesn't really show where they're riding to the town, so we'll explain the town roads versus the village roads. But what, what they're doing is from Saskadina Six, they're coming Pomfret Road, they're making a left onto twelve. And Chief Bliss was offering to have a traffic control there, just so that when you go onto twelve, right near that bridge, we all just got, got to see. Never knew the Pomfret Road was, uh, Route one sixty-six, now I know.
Yeah.
But yeah, that left onto twelve, he wants to have traffic control. So there'll be riders coming one at a time and there'll be an officer who can hold up traffic if he feels like it's necessary. And then they come in and they make a right on River Street after passing Billings Farm. And this is the change from the application that you received in the package tonight. The, the change is, is in order to avoid going through downtown and, and maybe slowing up any, any traffic. So rather than going by killing hands and making a right, um, uh, at that next stop sign, they're going to make a right on River Street and they're going to make a left on Mountain Ave. They're going to cross the middle bridge and then they're going to go around the village green like a, like a roundabout and make a right on one oh six and a left on, uh, Cross, Cross Street and a right on Golf Ave. And then our trail starts on Golf Ave. Then they do their three runs at Mount Peg, then they exit down at Knox Meadow at the fitness center. And then they ride one oh six back and then it's the same exact route, but just in reverse. So they'll go around the green, past the new M and T bank. Um, they'll make a right back over the middle bridge, right onto River Street. And then Officer Bliss would like to have the same traffic controller change positions and help the riders go from River Street to make that left on twelve. Um, so those are the changes that, you know, the application said no traffic control. And then we gave a slightly different map. So the, the village trustees, uh, issued the permit with this change and with those two spots for traffic control.
Which is Galafav up, then over, over, down for Knox Meadow, then up one oh six.
Yes.
Okay.
What's the, what's the time span from when the first rider hits a public road to the last rider?
So they start at the bottom of the S six parking lot at nine AM and it, it takes a normal human being twenty minutes to go. Nick Barry does it fifteen minutes, but yeah, so they'll get up, like first rider gets up at twenty minutes, gets down in two to three minutes. And so the first rider could be going onto the Pomfret Road by like Artistry Buildings at around nine twenty. That's the first time someone hit the public road. And then this came up in the trustees meeting, when's the sort of last rider, the entire stage?
Right.
Um, comeback, like when would this traffic controller need to get the last person from River Street onto twelve? And, um, we think that could be maybe as late as four PM. Just because, you know, you get some, they're not timed in between their segments, so they can go as slowly as they want. As long, they have a timing chip and then they just, they go, they get timed on the, the trail.
One of the, I guess, criticisms with overland was, you know, people trying to get out of their driveways and, and just not a lot of notice. Would you, do you plan to put notice like in the paper and on listserv and any signage?
So our, our plan is definitely to hit the Vermont standard.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, we had talked about, um, putting like route signs along the way, not just for the homeowners, but for the riders themselves. Um, and so we, that, those were our current plans.
Would they go up in advance? I mean, I just think the more notice people have that, hey, I'm going to have trouble riding, driving on my road.
They're up Friday and take them down at the end of the day Sunday.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the event's on Sunday, but we have them up on Friday. Because some people the day before, like, will ride, uh, the course just to practice.
Yep.
So you're saying that they go up one at a time?
Yeah.
So potentially it could be a line of bikes going through or do they go in groups? They're going to get pretty spread out. Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's hard to say for sure, but I mean, you could have literally individual riders going down, you know, riding through the village. I'm sure there'll probably be a little bit of grouping up, but it's not certainly going to be something like the overland where there could be hundreds of riders coming through at once. That was, that was twelve hundred riders in a mass start who were in a race. And this is, um, less than three hundred who are not timed. And we have instructions that say, ride single file, stay to the right of the road. They all traffic laws, um, be courteous to all other road users. Um, and then I gave special directions to how to get around the green. Told them, you think of it as a roundabout, merge into the outside lane, get into the inside lane to go, come around it, merge back to the outside lane to, to make your right.
Everything looks someplace to me. Hey, guys?
Yeah.
Any more questions or? Carrie?
Nope.
So I want to just condition the permit on, on doing what you've said as far as notice in the, in the standard and some signage up by Friday.
Sure. Do you want it both listserv and the paper? Because we, we tend to keep a lot of stuff out of listserv.
I don't care about the listserv, I don't read it.
Yeah, Vermont fifty just put their notice in the, in the standard, so we get a standard.
Those conditions, I'd move we approve.
All right. Motion by Susan, second by Ray. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Four, four in favor, one, uh, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a Pomfret Select Board tomorrow night, so if that one happens, then we, that will happen.
Getting it closed.
Uh, so that brings us to old business, first being the EDC approval of extension of marketing grant to February of twenty-three. That's, yes, but that's two next.
Oh, sorry.
Why do you want to wait?
No, no.
Sorry.
Um. Um, last August twenty twenty-one, a year and a month ago, the EDC and the Select Board approved a one-year marketing program to build a new marketing platform. The, to improve our marketing. The plan was a twelve-month plan. We did it in August because we didn't want to wait until January, the normal cycle of funding. So we started in August. The idea was to build, it was going to take ten months to build the platform, which involved taking lots of, mostly content creation, taking videos of people in different seasons. And then the last two months, we were going to test the platform, actually using it for marketing. The purpose of the platform is to collect names of people and contact information who are interested in Woodstock. The purpose of the platform is to collect names of people and contact information who are interested in Woodstock. And identify their interests, not just Ray Bourgeois at Gmail dot com, but I'm interested in gardening. Or I'm interested in outdoor activities or motor, you know, mountain biking or whatever. We built the platform on time and on budget, we started testing it in July and August. And the results were actually pretty spectacular in six weeks. We identified, we identified, increased our list of people. Same number, it took us six weeks as what we had done in the prior five years. So it was three thousand eight hundred percent improvement in our performance. Funding was supposed to, was through the end of August. We saved a little bit on the cost, so the funding is actually. Took us through the middle of September. Anticipating that, we, the EDC voted, we, we had one more season of content left to collect. Winter, we don't have, we don't currently have content for. For fall, sorry, for fall foliage, because it was too soon, we started the program at the end of August last year. So we currently have three seasons worth of content, the content is reusable for the future, I mean, you might refresh it slightly, but fundamentally. That most of the investment was done to create this content season by season, which then rotates. We need one more season. And so, and we'd like to continue the program because we, we've got three thousand people in the first five years, we got four thousand people in the first two months. So we think over the next five or six months, we can pick up twenty or twenty-five thousand more contacts to market to. Which would be, you know, an eight, a huge increase, obviously. We considered three options, stopping the program and not getting those benefits, we still have the platform, but we couldn't really market during foliage. We could only market three seasons. Just running it through, get, getting through foliage, two months. Which would cost about twenty-two thousand, or continuing it through February, which would then take us to an annual funding cycle. And we decided, we, we voted to, to fund it through February. It's forty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars to continue it, it's either charged through the end of February. And I just wanna say, not that this particularly affected our decision, but. During the course of this, the last three months really, we've increased our forecast for our revenues for twenty-twenty-two. By slightly more than forty-five thousand. Because the economy has been doing better than we forecast, so in fact, we'll end the year with slightly more reserves than we forecast. Even though we're ending up proposing spending forty-five thousand, we didn't fully anticipate. So our recommendation, so that's what we did, there's some presentation that shows what I've just said. And we're recommending that we fund this forty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I've got no questions and no concerns.
I'll make a motion to approve the EDC spent cost of forty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Susan, to approve the expenditure by the EDC of forty-five eight thirty-two. For the program. Marketing program, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Motion carries a four, four in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Brings us. Yeah.
Oh, you know, we need better like these flashing yellow lights.
He's gonna bring tape.
So that brings us to Loop Road. Which I was just on, there I'm back at it. And this is what a discussion carried from last month, we've seen the map. This is the agreement. That was drawn up with Peter Vawlers.
Is there anyone?
So myself, Greg McKenny and Tyler's here on Zoom as well. Yeah, we came in last select board meeting and presented the map, and I believe we're just missing the paperwork. That Tyler had provided, you guys have in front of you there.
I just had one question. Paragraph three, which seems to be an agreement between South Woodstock Field and Forest and Fernbrook LLC. I'm not quite sure why that's in our agreement and if it needs to be there. It doesn't appear that Fernbrook LLC is even a party to this agreement, so I didn't feel they should, that that paragraph should be in the.
I'm gonna defer to Peter, but my understanding is that the, the Loop Road has been relocated on lands of. South Woodstock Field and Forest. And then. I'm gonna guess that Fernbrook is taking over the portion of lands between the two roads. And then Fernbrook, excuse me, South Woodstock Field and Forest is conveying lands to the town.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's just a. So you just wanted, you want this piece to be a private agreement between?
Yeah, I just don't think it belongs in our, our agreement, right? I mean, it doesn't do anything, it has nothing to do with the town. Is that correct?
That, that's, that's right, that's fine, I mean, it makes, it's perfectly fine, can just remove that section.
That was my only.
Approve the. The land swap. And deleting.
Paragraph three.
Paragraph three in its entirety?
Yep.
Alright. That a motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Motion by Susan. Second by Ray to approve the town, the town highway right of way relocation agreement. As provided and delete paragraph three in its entirety. Is there any other discussion among the board?
No.
I'll call for a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Alright, sand bids.
Thank you.
So what I discovered after the first. Discuss this. Was that we can do this the least expensive way. By purchasing the dried screen sand from D and D Excavating. Twelve dollars and twelve cents per ton and the. Dry manufactured sand in Twin State. At eighteen dollars and ten cents a ton. That includes the three eights stone, which isn't really clear on the spreadsheet. And that will enable us to get the product that we need at the least expensive. Pricing of those two categories. If we decide, and, and we do generally buy a small amount of three eights crushed stone. And have a little bit of that at the highway garage, we'll buy that from Pike. But I guess what I just didn't make clear was. That Twins, well, I guess I did, Twin State. Three eight stone in the dried manufactured sand for that eighteen dollars and ten cents a ton price. And then those two companies, D and D Excavating, Twin State, they, they work together. And they're actually working in the same pit. Somewhere in Heartland, I think, and. And then they ship us equal amounts and we combine them. At the highway garage. That make.
It, it does, that makes more sense than the email I was trying to decipher. Sorry.
I thought it was perfectly clear.
It actually is now that you've explained it.
So am I right if I say we buy, that I move, we buy our dry screened sand from D and D Excavating? We buy dried manufactured sand, which might include.
Which does include.
Does include the crushed.
The three eights crushed stone.
From Twin State, and to the extent we need additional three crushed stone, we buy it by, from Pike.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Alright. Motion by Susan, second by Ray, as read by Susan already. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I've now learned more about sand than I ever.
Looks like Tyler has a question.
When you're finished, I was just waiting.
So the, that motion carries four in favor, one absent. And Tyler?
I was going to ask, I think someone needed to be designated to sign the paperwork. And I just wanted to sort of figure out the mechanics of just getting the paperwork signed.
You can amend your motion to authorize the chair to do that.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'm. I was the motion, right, so I'll amend the motion to authorize Joe as the chair of the select board to sign. The town highway right of way relocation agreement.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Amendment carries.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. So I think the next thing is the Peterkin. Nope, nope, new business, and then the next thing is Peterkin Hill Speed, Speed Request. Got Two Rivers. Survey here. The daily average was seventy cars between May twenty-first and June fourth, twenty twenty-two. Eighty-fifth percentile. Each direction was twenty-seven and twenty-eight miles per hour, the posted speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour. Rita's summary is that the. Eighty-fifth percentile of the vehicles traveling on this road are going at speeds below or slightly below. The posted speed limit and it does not appear to indicate. An issue with speeding.
I know Dolores's comment was that. They put it where she has a lot of. People tend to go slow there, and I know another Peterkin resident told me that there is speeding.
Yeah.
I'm just not clear how changing the speed limit is gonna change the speeding. And I also wasn't sure if there's even a speed limit sign on the road.
I believe there's. I can go drive, I'll, I'll have to survey some of the roads that might need some posted limits, I know most of them have it. I'm not opposed to lowering them. I do think that for surveys, requests that come before us, I think we should be systematic with collecting in the future and doing it every few years. Cause I don't like, it creates a lot of work to amend the ordinance. Certify it for court. You know, retain copies for fifteen years or whatever we need.
But according to this, there really isn't any reason.
No, I think the reason would be the presence of. Elderly pedestrians, cyclists, horseback riders on blind corners.
Miles an hour on the black.
Right.
Yeah.
The survey doesn't show, at least the evidence we have is that there's not a lot of speeding going on. You know, maybe that they put it in the wrong place. You know.
Yeah.
Have any, anything to show us that. I'm also not sure how much budget we have in the highway budget to keep replacing signs.
Yeah. So I would call for motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to. Go to Two Rivers, out of Cici's findings that nobody's speeding on that road and keep the speed limit as it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
I mean, just a little. The, the impetus for this was requests from the people who live on Peterkin, right?
Yes.
Right, no one's here.
No one's there. I mean, I'm, I'm.
I don't know that we asked them to come or not, but.
I'm generally in favor of lowering speed limits, I think people are going really fast on all these roads anyway. But it's anecdotal, it's just. Watching them do it and doing it myself, so.
If we. Look some of the guidance. That VLCT has posted, you're not supposed to post it below the eighty-fifth percentile. So twenty-five would be below the eighty, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but we could do thirty.
Why go through all that trouble?
I mean.
You know what, I mean.
Kerry does have a good point that. You know.
Nobody's out there with a speed gun.
No.
I mean. What?
I mean, I mean, our whole society is based on the assumption that people will in general follow, you know, the sorts of guidelines that we're all agreeing to follow.
We just don't have any evidence that they're not following it based on the Two Rivers survey.
Well, the. The issue being that, or the benefit of lowering it is. You're not, you're not making violators out of eighty-five percent of the drivers. And you're giving the opportunity for a potential for safety by reducing the speed limit, in this case, it would be by five.
I just don't think it's worth changing signs by miles an hour either, we.
How much, how much does it cost to change the signs there?
I don't know what a sign costs, but.
We, we just.
Plus labor, so.
Yeah.
Looking at maybe four hundred dollars per sign.
We just did an ordinance like two months ago, setting all the speed limits.
Right.
And I think I would rather wait, I mean, I know my road's posted at thirty-five, which is probably way too fast. But I would rather, I think it's more efficient that we do that annually, right, the speed limits?
No, we have it, we do it when they've been requested or if something comes up.
We did a whole list.
We did, yeah, I have that whole list, like as a file and I adjusted based on, you know, what, if we made any changes in the past. You know, I think we did it like two thousand seven. You know, I was involved in that.
On the board.
And then again, two thousand eighteen, and then again.
But so we do global changes like that, will that.
I think we should do global changes like.
Will that require like global speed studies?
It would require. No, it would be by road, by request. I think. What my recommendation is. You know, thirty miles an hour on this. In the future, if we get requests for more roads, we queue them up and every three or four years. Look at the speed result, the speed survey results. And amend the ordinance globally as, as dictated by the speed survey.
Is there anything that talks about like widths of road and speed, because some of the dirt roads.
Yeah, so VLCT has a six-point like. Guidance and it'd be like the width of the road, blind spots, parking, so. I don't think there's a lot of people parking on the street on Peterkin usage.
I would just rather see us do this all at once, this is our second one.
Yeah.
In a month.
I do agree with you, it's just that this was brought before us one or two years ago, so it's. The only thing is I don't wanna put this off five years because we're changing our strategy now. I don't, you know, if the vote is to deny it, the vote is deny it.
I do think we could make a statement going forward when people want to, you know, petition that their speed limits be lowered. They will add this to a queue that we review. Every, so. Specified unit of time.
And I, I think that's kind of my general recommendation. Is to address this now because it's been in our, been in our queue. But in the future, to be more globally systematic, every three or five years.
Okay.
Doing them.
Well, if we can stick to that, yeah. What happens when the next?
Well, someone, so I guess the way I see it, we're playing out as somebody would call off, you know, if somebody makes a request for. A road speed change before the select board. And if that request to do a, to have a speed survey done, it's approved by the select board, it would get put on a queue. And by planning with Rita. At the end of a five-year cycle, so it's twenty twenty-two now, so.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven, we would do those.
All.
We would do speed surveys on the requested roads and then based on the results of those speed surveys.
That's fine. That's fine. Why don't we stick to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of it is about managing expectations. If somebody submits a request, they know what they're doing, but we didn't have that expectation in place here, so.
Right.
I think we have to.
What would you say, thirty miles?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll amend the motion to reduce the speed limit thirty miles an hour.
Okay. Second by Kerry. If there's no other discussion among the board. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So there's four in favor, one absence, a motion carries. To reduce Peterkin to thirty. We want to talk about fall, fall meetings on October, the. Fourth, we would have a morning meeting. Except we've also warned the farm-to-table. Zoning amendment. For that afternoon at five P M. So I think it's appropriate to cancel that morning meeting for November. If we can keep that. Meeting on the schedule because we plan on opening the budget cycle. And looking forward to December, don't think there's a need for the morning meeting there. Is that pretty consistent with everyone's thoughts?
That works for me. So November will be strictly a budget.
It'll be the normal timeframe, but we'll do it as a budget meeting. I don't think there's anything that comes before us, that's aside from that, that's not emergent. We can just. Yeah.
Alright, there was.
Uh, to cancel, I think because it's a regularly scheduled, I think we need to.
Cancel the October.
We don't need to, I think we need a motion to cancel October and December.
Right, November motion to cancel October fourth and December.
Sixth.
Six. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Susan, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. Town health officer appointment.
A one that was filled out. Is it blank?
No, it's blank.
Well. Probably everybody knows David is our health officer.
Esteemed health officer.
Needs up for reappointment and he's reading.
I'm hoping to appoint David Green as a town health officer.
Second.
Alright, motion by Ray, second by Susan to appoint David Green as the town health officer. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Any other business? I've got nothing else, so we're ready to go into executive session, which will be under. Title one, section three thirteen. Let me just pull up the subsection. Should be contracts here somewhere.
I think, I think contract.
Yeah, we'll just call it contracts. I don't actually, I was scanning through it real quick. So. Executive session under title one, section three thirteen for contract.
Move, we move into executive for that purpose.
I'll second it.
Yeah, all in favor?
Hi.
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 I make a motion to move the. County Woodstock Emergency Services. To accept the contract assets.
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Kerry to approve the. Town Woodstock Community Service Agreement with the town of Pomfret. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries four with one absent. And that just has minutes left. Is. August ninth and September sixth.
I make a motion to accept the August ninth and September six minutes.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the meeting. The meeting minutes of August ninth and September sixth. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. And can I get a?
Was that the second?
I think that was a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, alright, non disobeyable motion carries.